The meeting of the Newport News School Board for Tuesday, December 15th, 2020. On behalf of the members of the school board and the superintendent. Oh, let me, let me start that again. Good evening. I'd like to call it order, the regular meeting of the Newport News School Board for December 15th, 2020. On behalf of the members of the school board and the superintendent, I welcome each of you present and watching. And Cormac is present to transact the business of the school division. The COVID-19 pandemic has had an unprecedented effect on all of us. We are all adapting to this new way of conducting business and the school board is as well. Personal barriers are installed between members of the board and our visitors and staff are socially distanced in the auditorium in compliance with the governor's order. Tonight, we are featuring a virtual meeting and we are inviting our guests to participate with us virtually as well. We are taking these important steps to ensure the health and well-being of our staff and the public. We value and appreciate your partnership. We'll begin tonight's meeting with an invocation and pledge of the flag. Here due to the honors is Ms. Tamika Turner, PTA president at Dozier Middle School. Ms. Turner, thank you for joining us and please lead us out.
Good evening Chairman Brown, Dr. Parker and board members. PTA encourages our students to participate in our reflection program to express their creativity. This year's theme was I matter because. As we reflect on this year and think about the future, let's keep these thoughts in mind. You matter because you are you. You bring your own perspective and history that makes your actions matter. Now, more than ever, you matter because your choices can affect and protect others. You matter because your eyes above the mask still smile. Carrie Albersen. Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you, Ms. Thank you, Ms. Turner. And the next item on tonight's agenda is school board recognitions. Dr. Parker, I believe we have some recognition tonight.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman. This evening, I'm pleased to report that we have some acknowledgements of our city faith community partners, as you're aware. Newport News, the city of Newport News and Newport News Public Schools is blessed to have many organizations in our city and in our community who support our, our school division. This evening, Ms. will acknowledge several of our faith, some of our faith organizations who have done some significant work for us in the past and we would love to take this opportunity this evening to acknowledge them. So, Mrs. Price, I'll turn it over to you for the recognition.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. I have the honor of presenting this recognition. Each new school year brings the excitement and exploration of new knowledge and the anticipation of new possibilities for all of our students. This new year has started like no other. Like many school divisions across Virginia, Newport News Public Schools started with virtual instruction. We've all had to adjust to a new way of teaching and learning and working. This will be a memorable year, not because of virtual instruction. It will be memorable because of how our community partners pull together to support our students and their families. Tonight, we recognize For Our City Foundation. For Our City, a group of local churches initiated and organized a collection of over 20,000 cloth face masks for our students. Joining us tonight from Lifehouse Church or Lifehouse Newport News is Director of Community, Julia Jones. Ms. Jones? Catalyst Church Lead Pastor Jeff Minji. New Beach Grove Baptist Church Ethel Wendley. And Journey Church Lead Pastor Chris Hoyt. There were also some other churches who participated in this effort that were unable to join us this evening. That's Calvary Chapel Newport News, Menchurah Baptist Church where the lead pastor is Jim Weston, Ivy Baptist Church, Crosswalk Church, City Life Church. Because of these dedicated individuals and their congregations, thousands of students will have cloth masks, cloth masks when they return to in-person instruction. Made possible by the generous and tireless support of the faith-based community around the city of Newport News. Thank you and thank you, and please thank all your congregants and we appreciate your partnership and your ongoing support. So, thanks to everyone for the, from the For Our City Foundation. Thank you, and again, please pass along our congratulations and our thanks to all of your members. That's it for our recognitions this evening.
Hey, Ms. Jones, I just wanted to say thank you for recognizing us and also Dr. Parker and the school board. And I know on behalf of For Our City Foundation and all the faith leaders, you know, we're always looking for opportunities to, to show love and to support Newport News Public Schools in any way we can. So, thank you.
And it's good to see Mr. Jones and a few familiar faces. Thank you so much for your support. It is, Mr. Chairman, it is normally our custom to send some, a certificate recognizing the acknowledgement to these organizations and we will, we surely intend to do so in the, in the coming days. So, thank you so much again for supporting Newport News Public Schools and the children of Newport News. And that concludes acknowledgements, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, well then, welcome back. During our regular board meetings, we provide time for the public to address the school board. These opportunities are scheduled in the early part of our agenda and also towards the end of the meeting. The school board recognizes that during the pandemic, some members of the public may not be able to join us in person. In fact, if you look out across the auditorium this evening, evening, no one is joining us in person. We're having a virtual meeting and our speakers will be joining us virtually as well. As advertised, citizens may submit comments via a web form, email or voicemail up to 30 minutes prior to our meeting, time to be included in the official meeting record. For those of you joining us to speak tonight, the board considers this an opportunity to listen to your comments. Please understand that we will consider your comments or concerns and get back to you at a later time. We ask that you comply with our three-minute time limit. And as your time comes to an end, the Madam Clerk will remind you that your time is up and we ask you to wrap up your comments within the three-minute time period. As your name is called, we will bring you, I believe, into the Zoom room and, and allow you to speak. The first card I have here this evening is Ms. Mary Voss.
All right, good evening Superintendent, Dr. Parker and members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. We appreciate you making this accommodation for us. I'm speaking today in support of staying virtual until a vaccine, as well as in support of collective bargaining rights for NNP teachers and staff, which are so vitally important during a pandemic. The two, the two core school metrics indicators that the CDC uses to rate COVID risk are both currently in the highest risk red category in Newport News with an eye-popping 371 new COVID cases per 100,000 within the last 14 days. I remember back in October when that number was around 80 per 100,000, so that's quite an increase. Even school districts that aggressively reopened are now closing because of COVID spikes. With multiple vaccines that appear to be highly effective now being rolled out, it's safest to postpone school reopening until teacher, staff and families have a chance to take a COVID vaccine if they wish. This is especially important because one in four U.S. teachers are at risk of severe COVID, according to a report from the Kaiser Family Foundation. Loudoun County School staffer died of COVID in March. A Lexington County teacher died this month. Just imagine if Newport News Schools reopen too quickly with the vaccine right around the corner and a Newport News school employee is the next Virginia teacher or staff member to die of COVID. And beyond even the most severe cases of COVID, we must also consider the risk of milder and more moderate cases that nonetheless have led to significant long-term health impacts even after the COVID infection is over. News reports are littered with data about the long-term mental health, respiratory, brain and impacts on other systems due to COVID. Working during a pandemic, a seat at the bargaining table for teachers and staff becomes even more important. Collective bargaining is the process in which working people through their unions negotiate contracts with their employers to determine things like pay, benefits and policies. Teachers and staff having a seat at the bargaining table also helps communities bring in vital public resources for school systems. Teacher and staff working conditions are student learning conditions, so giving us a voice also benefits our students. Collective bargaining for public employees becomes legal in Virginia this May 2021, but only if localities opt into it and vote for it. Sadly, Virginia is currently one of three states in the country where collective bargaining with public employees is outlawed, which is an artifact of the long history of anti-labor legislation in Virginia that is slowly but surely being rolled back. You can help Newport News teachers and staff change that this May. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Voss. Next card I have is Mr. Jordan M. Gray.
All right, good evening Newport News School Board and Superintendent, Dr. Parker. As you guys know, last month I met with you guys and spoke out at the meeting last month and had a couple of concerns, of course, about teacher workload and other things. I was proud to report to the school board that immediately following that meeting, several of the division leadership reached out to me individually and arranged meetings. So, this past week, I was able to meet with Dr. Barnett and Dr. Jones and senior leadership for our division. And we spent several minutes apiece talking about teacher workload, student attendance, and a plethora of other issues that are on our minds right now. And just wanted to say that was a very positive meeting and I appreciate our school board and superintendent for promoting that kind of dialogue with our teachers and our division leadership. So, let's hope that that keeps up during this pandemic. I think that's essential for success in a division and I'm proud to say that I've worked in a division that still wants to hear teachers' voices. In my time left, I do want to talk a little bit about the ongoing teacher concerns that are being echoed by teachers all across this division. And the number one issue right now is teacher workload. Teachers are spending an additional two to three hours per day working on lessons, grading, calling parents and a plethora of other different things that they're doing. And what that's resulting is in is basically a lack of morale. Teacher morale across Newport News, I believe, is at an all-time low. Teachers feel as though their purpose is dwindling and their success is dwindling. And so, we definitely need to find ways to encourage our teachers and to support our teachers in number one, in different ways as we move forward in the pandemic. We don't know how much longer we're going to have to continue in this kind of model and we definitely need that support as educators to be able to do our jobs the best. And teacher workload is that, is that main issue there. I know that Dr. Barnett and Dr. Jones and I mentioned about a potential teacher workday being added to the calendar in, in January. That's something that I certainly, I certainly would like to see happen. And we also talked about that word unencumbered. That word is very important to me because right around that time, I think it was Dr. Jones that said something about, well, we might have to do a COVID training or something for that day. And, and I said, well, then it wouldn't be unencumbered time. And so, if we have an unencumbered workday, then we need to make it truly unencumbered, which means it gives the teachers the time and the resources they need to, to have in order to really plan, to grade, to contact parents and to really do the special things that fill, form those relationships. So, I appreciate that communication and I look forward to more opportunities in the future and still my honor to work for the school division. I love it here in Newport, it's still good.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Last card I have is, I believe the name is Prem Kuma. Mr. Prem Kuma?
No, it's okay, Mr. Brown, you're close. It's Prem Kumar, but thank you so much anyway. It's not your fault. I, it's difficult, I understand. Hello, hello, board members. Thank you guys so much for taking the time to listen to us and I want to reiterate what my colleagues have just spoken out to us. It is really a nice thing for, for you guys to actually take the time to listen to us and hear our concerns. And I'm speaking on behalf of myself, a few other teachers at the school that I work with, and I believe one of them may have even sent you guys an email, Mr. Connor, Connor Collins, may have sent you guys an email regarding a lot of what I'm talking about, but I heard what he had to say and me and the other colleagues of our school had to say and we wanted to bring those up. What I was really wondering and to piggyback off of what the last speaker just spoke about regarding morale, I will totally admit that it's absolutely is a key issue for us. I'm not saying that it's me, but I have heard many teachers and I've seen many teachers that are kind of mentally just checking out in, you know, and it's getting to the point now where I feel like we're getting to the point where we're going to be doing the barest minimum just to reach a quota or to reach a set standard. And I, I don't like that because I enjoy this job. And I feel like the grace and understanding that's being given to the students and the families, I don't know if it's necessarily being given to the employees. We're being made to use our teaching, to use our days to teach from home and the same time we're teaching in an empty classroom. I mean, I feel like we're, we're, we're not going to be able to get very effective learning on either side, especially if we go forward with a hybrid plan. My other question, you know, it should not be, for example, if they're docking days, they shouldn't be able to dock days from us if we're virtually teaching at home. You know, if, for example, I come in with a cough and they say, hey, go home, but I still have to take a sick day to do that regarding the fact that I can still do a virtual Zoom meeting, I feel like that's a little bit of a concern to me. Another issue that I had regarding that is reopening. For example, cold and flu season is right upon us. You know, I know that I'm not sick personally, but I know plenty of people who get bad coughs. I get coughs in the winter all the time, regardless of the fact of other cold symptoms. And it, I know for a fact it turns people off, especially when everybody hears coughing and they assume that, oh, man, you know, something may be coming. My concern is, is that, you know, are we, how are we going to address those things in the future? How are we going to address that regarding, especially if we are planning to have a re-hybrid and a reopening plan? What is going to be the thing, especially with the rise in cases as my first colleague brought up regarding it? And I mean, that's really about it. I, I can't say too, too much about it that hasn't already been said. So, thank you guys so much. I really appreciate all your time and effort and thank you guys for making it definitely a fun place to work.
Thank you, Mr. Prem Kumar. Did we get it that time?
There you go.
All right.
Cut it that time. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Are there any additional cards? Are there any more cards? Are there any more cards? There being no additional cards, thank you for your comments and thoughts this evening. We will now move, move on to section three, the consent agenda, which includes 3.01, minutes from the regular board meeting on, school board meeting on November 17th, 2020, 3.02, minutes from the work session on November 17th, 2020, 3.03, financial reports, including the revenue report for November 2020, the expense report for November 2020 and child nutrition services report for November 2020. And the 3.04, the personnel report. And 3.05, appointment of our new accounting supervisor, Ray Reyes, as deputy clerk of the school board. 3.06, revisions to the 2021 school board meeting calendar to reflect changes in our budget development timeline. The superintendent's proposed operating budget for the next school year will be presented on March 9th and we will hold a public meeting on the proposed budget, March 16th. And our regular monthly board meeting and budget approval will be on March 23rd. 3.07, a budget transfer. With all those items, at this time, can we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, Dr. Best. Madam Clerk, was there any discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Harris?
Marvin Harris, four.
Mr. Hunter?
Gary Hunter, four.
Mrs. Searls Law?
Lisa Searls Law, four.
Mrs. Aiman? Dr. Best?
Terry Best, four.
Mr. Ely?
John Ely, four.
And Mr. Brown?
Douglas Brown, four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Then that moves us on to our action items and we have a few action items this evening. First is item 4.01, proposed FY 20 legislative program. Dr. Parker, do you have some comments on the legislative program?
Just, Mr. Chairman, just that you had a presentation by, by Mr. Finneran at the last board meeting and presented a full legislative slate of legislative priorities for the school board to consider and adopt this evening. And if you have any questions, I think Mr. Finneran can join us via Zoom if you have any questions regarding any of those items. We were fortunate to also have an opportunity to speak to several of our legislators at the beginning of the month around some of those priorities and some of our elected officials have already received copies of those items as well.
All right, thank you, Dr. Parker. Board members, are there any questions about the legislative program at this time? If we need to bring Mr. Finneran out? All right, seeing no, seeing no questions, may I have a motion to approve the legislative program?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the legislative program as presented.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Marvin Harris, second.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Any further discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Harris?
Marvin Harris, four.
Mr. Hunter?
Gary Hunter, four.
Mrs. Searls Law?
Lisa Searls Law, four.
Mrs. Aiman? Dr. Best?
Terry Best, four.
Mr. Ely?
John Ely, four.
Mr. Brown?
Douglas Brown, four.
Motion carries seven zero.
All right, then our next action item are new course approvals for the school year 2021, 2022. I recall we had those presented to us at our last work session. Dr. Parker, do you have any comments on the new course proposals?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Other than my staff are standing by, if the board members have any questions regarding those courses, you received a presentation, one of those items at the last board meeting, board work session, excuse me.
All right, board members, you do have the item in your information packet. At this time, we have a motion to approve the course proposals for the 2021, 22 school year.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the new course proposals for school year FY 21, 22.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
I second it.
Thank you, Dr. Best. All right, is there any further discussion or questions for the staff to bring forward at this time? All right, seeing no further discussion, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Harris?
Marvin Harris, four.
Mr. Hunter?
Gary Hunter, four.
Mrs. Searls Law?
Lisa Searls Law, four.
Mrs. Mrs. Aiman? Dr. Best?
Terry Best, four.
Mr. Ely?
John Ely, four.
Mr. Brown?
Douglas Brown, four.
Motion carries seven zero.
All right. And we are all doing a great job with the, the virtual. It's moving, moving right along. All right, so now we do have an additional action item in our agenda this evening in regards to a 30-day notion, a motion for the superintendent's contract. Is there a motion, does someone have a motion to present at this time?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have a motion pursuant to section 22.1-60D of the Code of Virginia. I move that the school board agree to waive the 30-day advance meeting notice of the vote planned for Dr. Parker's renegotiated contract as is permitted under the aforementioned code provision.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Marvin Harris, second.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. All right, further discussion on the motion? Hearing no, hearing no further discussion, Madam Clerk, we will go ahead and call the roll and we'll, one, one commo check here, we'll just make sure that Ms. Aiman's microphone is still functioning.
Testing, testing.
Okay, I can hear you. Wonderful, Madam, Madam Clerk, please go ahead and call the roll.
Mr. Harris?
Marvin Harris, four.
Mr. Hunter?
Gary Hunter, four.
Mrs. Searls Law?
Lisa Searls Law, four.
Dr. Dr. Best?
Terry Best, four.
Mr. Ely?
John Ely, four.
Mr. Brown?
Douglas Brown, four.
Motion carries seven, seven zero.
Thank you. And now at this time, I believe that there is a contract that we wish to currently terminate and bring up for approval at this time. Is there a motion regards to the superintendent's contract?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move to terminate Dr. Parker's contract and to approve the new proposed contract.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Marvin Harris, second.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Motion seconded by Mr. Harris. Discussion, any discussion on the, on the motion? All right, hearing none, then Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Harris?
Marvin Harris, four.
Mr. Hunter?
Gary Hunter, four.
Mrs. Searls Law?
Lisa Searls Law, four.
Mrs. Aiman?
Rebecca Aiman, four.
Dr. Best?
Terry Best, four.
Mr. Ely?
John Ely, four.
And Mr. Brown?
Douglas Brown, four.
Motion carries seven zero.
All right, well, thank you. And I believe at this time that concludes the action items in our agenda for the evening. And now we will move on to the section five, which is our reports and information section. 5.01 is an update on the return to learn plan and, Dr. Parker, I believe you have a lengthy presentation for us, for us tonight.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for the confidence of the school board with the contract renewal. Every month, we bring an updated presentation to the school board on our current status regarding our return to learn efforts. And much is going on, much has taken place over the course since, since the month of October, when we first presented a return to learn update. We have made several changes to our adjusted schedule. So, this evening, our, our teams are going to just give you a quick update on athletics because we are rapidly heading towards the winter sports season and we have had to make some adjustments to our scheduling based on our recent COVID data. And also a COVID update. As you're aware, the division has a COVID dashboard, which is updated weekly with most recent COVID information from the VDH as well as the CDC. And also, we track our number of positive cases within our school division in clear transparency for the community to see where we may have any positive cases. So, that information is readily available on a daily basis to the community, but this evening, we'll also share any recent data that we have with, on health metrics that associated with Newport News Public Schools. So, I'll start off this evening by having Mr. Michael Nicholas, Mike Nicholas join, Mike Nichols join us for the athletic timeline and also give you some information regarding our mitigation strategies regarding sports and athletics. Mr. Nichols?
Chairman Brown, can you hear me?
Pretty fine.
Okay, Chairman Brown, Vice Chair, Ms. Searls Law, school board and Dr. Parker, good evening. My name is Mike Nichols, the Program Administrator for Youth Development. And when I spoke with you previously, I informed you of where we were in regards to our return to play plan. And I informed you on where we were in regards to our return to play plan. I discussed with you the three phases as it related to athletics, the mitigation strategies we were proposing, the athletic timeline and documents student athletes had to have completed before they would be allowed to condition or try out for their respective teams. This evening, I'm here to give you an update on the winter sports season, inform you of the mitigation strategies we have in place for each individual winter sport. And last, to let you know of the athletic timeline changes. On July 27th, the Virginia High School League voted to move forward with Model Three, which is before you and it's, and it's reopening of sports and activities for the 2020, 2021 school year. The model delayed the Virginia High School League's sports and activities until December 7th and it adopted a condensed interscholastic plan and whereby all sports would play 60% of their typical schedule. and whereby all sports would play sixty percent of their typical schedule. The first season, winter sports had two start dates, December seventh, and that was for basketball and for sideline cheer, and that started last Monday. And December the fourteenth, which was yesterday, for indoor track and for swim and dive. Wrestling was also scheduled to start yesterday on December seventh. However, we have suspended that sport for the remainder of the school year. Also, as an update, the contest dates for winter sports that were supposed to start in December have also been postponed at this time. And the new contest dates will be considered during the week of January the eleventh. And we will also look at the, the region and the local metrics before we make that decision. Seasons two and three are on schedule to start on the dates that are before you. But we will notify you if we have to make any changes before those sports begin. The academic activities that you see listed here also have started in December and will carry on throughout the school year. As a reminder, these academic activities also have to follow the school division's mitigation strategies, but these activities will complete, will compete, I'm sorry, virtually. And now I would just briefly discuss the additional mitigation strategies that will occur during competition. In all sports, athletes will have to come to the site already dressed and ready to compete because locker rooms will not be allowed to be used this year. However, each school will provide a sanitized place for the competing team to meet before, during, and after the game. But the teams must bring their own water bottles at this time. Now, last concerning facilities, the schools must also provide a safe, secure place for the officials to meet before and after the game and also during halftime. As far as the pregame procedures, they have changed this year. In the past, team captains would meet at center court for specific instructions from the officials. But this year, only the referee and the head coach will be there and the customary handshake will not occur as it has in the past. To continue with basketball, just a little bit about bench protocols and spectators at the game. All basketball players will have assigned seats. They will be socially distanced apart from each other and they will have their name on the seat. And they will use the same seat throughout the game. So if they happen to enter the game, they can put their mask on their seat and they will also have their water there and no one else can sit at that seat. All other players not in the game, coaches and other bench personnel must also wear a mask when they are not in the game with no exceptions. And last concerning bench protocols, there will be no interaction or no contact between players when they substitute in and out of the game. In the past, they will have, you know, high fives or fist bumps or change towels, but that will be no longer allowed this year. And at this time, we will not allow any outside spectators at the games at this time. But in January, the Peninsula District Central Office Athletic Administrators from Gloucester, from Hampton and myself, we will meet again to possibly update this decision. But it will be in accordance with the governor's guidelines. And at that time, we will also discuss whether or not we will have admission until the games at that time. If fans are allowed at some point, they will sit opposite the team benches unless a particular gym has space constraints. And then at that time, they will be considered, they will be allowed to sit in the bleachers, but there will be several rows between the team and where the fans are allowed to sit. And last, if any fans are allowed, they will all have to answer the COVID questionnaire before they will be allowed to enter into the gymnasium or the event. Then the last thing I would like to talk about, about basketball will be what happens at the scorer's table and also the equipment to be used. The host team will be responsible for sanitizing the scorer's table before the game and at halftime. And also the seats will be limited to just essential personnel and that will include the home team scorer and the timer. Other personnel such as could be the, the visiting team scorer or a statistician, or it could be someone from the media. They will not be deemed as essential personnel to the game and it may be necessary for them to sit at another location in the gym just to make sure we have enough space at the scorer's table. Also, the host team will be responsible for sanitizing the basketball before the game and also during all timeouts. And that ball at various times in the past, that ball has been used for the kids while they will have been warming up, but no longer can they do that this year. The game ball has to be set aside, has to be sanitized before play begins and it has to be sanitized again through every timeout. Now I'll switch to cheering. This year, for the first time, cheerleaders will be considered as spectators and they will remain either in the stands or on the sidelines at all times with their mask on and they would not be allowed to come onto the floor at any time. They may use pom poms or signs just as long as they are not shared amongst one another. They can only have their own and they, and no stunting will be allowed at this time. Also, due to spectator limits, cheerleaders would not be able to travel to away games. And lastly, due to spectator restrictions on certain nights, such as if it's possible to get a senior night in, we may have to limit the number of cheerleaders that may be present for the competition. Next, we'll switch over to indoor track. Again, as in all sports, the, our athletes must come to the event dressed because they would not be allowed to use locker rooms. What we have added one mitigation strategy this year when it comes to our jumpers, particular our high jumpers and our pole vaulters. We will have several tarps that will, that will cover the landing pits this year so that every person who jumps in the pole vault or high jump, once they land on the pit, they will land on a clean sanitized tarp. Once they finish, we will remove that tarp, sanitize it, place another there so that every athlete will be able to land on something sanitary just to make sure that's another additional mitigation strategy. Also in the past, our teams have been allowed to practice at the Blue Williams Sports Complex, but this year they would not be allowed to do so. However, they will have two scheduled meets there and the facility will be responsible for making sure that it's sanitized for our athletes. But we ask that all of our athletes make sure that they wear masks at all times, anytime that they're in that facility. And the last sport I would talk about tonight will be swim dive. And it's a little changed this year also because swimmers will report to the Midtown Community Center this year at their allotted time on the day of the meet. But only two teams at a time will be allowed into the center and they will have a dual meet against one another. And then once that, those, those two teams finish competing, they will have to exit the Midtown Community Center for the other two teams to enter. In the past, we have, have allowed multiple teams to enter there, but due to mitigation strategies and also space constraints, this year, no more than two teams will be able to be in the community center at any given time. Lastly, I would like to just talk about transportation of our athletes to an event and from an event. In Newport News, our buses at this point will carry anywhere between twenty two to twenty six student athletes, their coach and the driver and anyone else they may need to be necessary on a particular team, which may include a, an athletic trainer or a manager. While they're on that bus, everyone is, will only be allowed one seat per athlete, so they will have the entire seat and they will alternate between sitting in the aisle and sitting next to the window. The only other exception would be if siblings are on the same team or you have more than one person living in the same home. Those can sit on the same, on the same seat. Also, the same seat that you go to the game on is the same seat you had to return from the game on. So you won't be allowed to switch seats as well, just to make sure that those seats are sanitized as best as possible. And also, once that driver drops that team off, they will have to sanitize the bus before picking those athletes up and bringing them back. We will also make sure that the windows are cracked to try to have as much ventilation as possible. And also just to make sure that everyone on that bus has on a mask and that includes the driver, the coaches, the players, and anyone else is up there. And we've also make sure that our coaches have additional masks and that anyone should happen to need one. And last, I think I would talk about is just our athletic timeline. As I talked about previously, we had sports physicals in July and August to make sure that our athletes were ready on the first day of tryouts that they had physicals. On October the fourteenth, we met with our coaches, athletic trainers, athletic, athletic directors, and we discussed the mitigation strategies and procedures that we would have in place so that they all would hear the same message at the same time. We started out a season conditioning on October the twenty sixth. And last Monday, we started our first winter sports, which was basketball and the sideline cheer. And then yesterday, we concluded with winter sports with our indoor track and swim dive teams. But as of yesterday, that will, will be the last day that they will be able to have contact, sports contact, I'm sorry, contact practice. So starting today through January the eighth, they will be allowed to do winter conditioning, but they will no longer be allowed to have contact with one another. So once we come back in January, depending on the metrics, we will make some decisions regarding when, when the, when the sport, winter sports season will resume. So that's the report that I have and at this time I take on any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Board members, questions? All right. Well, I don't see any questions at, at this time. Thank you, Mr. Nichols, for that report. And we will move on to the, the.
We, we still have the second report of the return to learn program, which will be Mrs. Mary Lou Rousseau. Just a comment about athletics, Mr. Chairman, we are in close communication with Gloucester and Hampton, city public schools, which make up the Peninsula District. We want to make sure that we are fairly consistent in terms of how our students condition, practice, and compete. So many of the decisions we have made regarding athletics have been made in conjunction with those two other districts. We also have met on various occasions with the local Peninsula Health District. They recently have advised us to switch, to minimize any contact with our student athletes as our health metrics, based on our health metrics. And we have accommodated that with, by, by not holding practices as of today for a set period until predetermined period until we can determine that it's safe to do so. So just want to make that clarification and thank you, Mr. Nichols, for that update. Mrs. Rousseau will give a recent update as far as our COVID health metrics. Ms. Rousseau, and safety, and some safety information.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. Mr. Brown, members of the board, good evening. I would like to give you just a brief update on our COVID data. Starting with our first slide, there we go. If a picture says a thousand words, I think this one pretty much tells it all. This is a picture of the state and what the transmission level is across the state. And as you can see, most of the state, except for three locations, are at the highest risk level of transmission. So if you're curious about who the three are, the green is Sussex County. Below that is Greensville and Cumberland County in the center of the state. So those are the only three that are not at the highest risk level in Virginia. And if you look at the box at the right, top right of the screen, these are the numbers from yesterday. Our number of cases in Newport News were three hundred and thirty seven per hundred thousand people. And our percentage of positive tests was ten point three percent. So if you look at the next slide, this is our COVID dashboard, which Dr. Parker mentioned earlier. You can see that, not surprising, once you look at the map of the state, the eastern region, peninsula and the city of Newport News are all above two hundred cases per hundred thousand, so at the highest risk level. And with regard to positivity, case positivity, you can see there's more variability in that. But the eastern region and Newport News are both increasing and we do update this once a week, as Dr. Parker mentioned. We'll update this again tomorrow, because tomorrow we'll receive the most recent report from the Peninsula Health Department. And Newport News, of course, will move to the highest column. And we'll see, I believe that Peninsula will as well, based on the data that I've looked at today. So you know, that's just where we are with regard to the COVID data currently. And Dr. Parker and I had a meeting with the Health Department Director on Friday and she told us that we could expect to see continued increases in cases throughout the month of January and into the month of February. So I believe that we'll see these numbers continue. On the next slide, on our dashboard, in addition to the COVID metrics, we also show how that affects us as a school division. So this shows this week's data that we have nine hundred and forty seven staff working on site this week. You know that our teachers are, most of them, if not all of them, are teaching from home this week. So this is our support staff and administrative staff that are working on site this week. We've had thirty seven staff test positive for COVID since September the eighth. We will update that information a little later this week as well, and those numbers unfortunately are trending up as well. In addition to positive cases, which this reflects, we also have staff that are required to quarantine if they are a close contact of a positive case. We've had one hundred and forty three staff members required to quarantine since September the eighth. We had forty four quarantine in the month of November and already in December, we've had forty six. So those numbers are, are increasing as well. But that is what we're doing, our contact tracing, to make sure that we can reduce the chance of spread in our school division, try to keep everyone safe. So looking at our next slide, you know, of course, that the governor did update his requirements as well at the end of last week. These are the most probably important changes. None of them really affect us directly, but the number of folks that can gather in both public and private settings has dropped from twenty five to ten individuals. Does not apply to schools or public institutions. But we are taking heed from that anyway and trying to reduce the number of folks that we have in every location. He has issued a universal mask mandate saying that you need to be wearing a mask whether you're in a school or an office. Of course, we were requiring our students and staff to do that. Our students really haven't come back, but our staff to do that. And he also strengthened the mitigation strategies for retail businesses, restaurants and bars, which again does not affect us directly. So those were the changes from the governor's most recent update. And then I'd like to talk about one more thing before we end our update on return to learn, and that is our meals to go schedule. That schedule will change over the winter break. Our child nutrition staff will be providing meals on December the twenty first, twenty third, twenty eighth and thirtieth from four PM to five PM at only the sites that are listed here. And each of those days will provide two days of meals so that families will have to come, not as often, but will still get meals for two days at a time when they come. So that's our update for today on return to learn. Glad to address any questions if you have.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Rousseau. Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Ely.
Um, I know you said something about the lunch distribution. Being that we're going into the winter months, do we have plans of letting the staff that's preparing the food, do, during the distribution, do it from inside? Because we had a couple cold days, the last couple days, and just seeing stuff out there, they look very cold and uneasy. I was wondering, do we have a plan to let them go inside?
We can certainly look into that, Mr. Ely. We have really had it outside in an effort to reduce the contact of folks and people can drive through, so it really has facilitated that. But I'll certainly talk to Mrs. Alexander and her staff about how, what we might do about that.
And second question, you said the numbers that you received data that continues to go up, do you think it's possible that we could just, instead of, I guess, we're one minute we're going in, next minute we're doing virtual? Do you think it's something possible, being that they continue to trend up? And you thinking this could continue to trend to the February months, that we just could stay virtual for the whole school year? Then is something possible that we'd look at, or is that something that the CDC is suggesting that we do?
I don't believe that we'll see a recommendation from the CDC. They provide, not the CDC, but the Virginia Department of Health provides guidance. But it'll certainly be a decision that Dr. Parker will make with the board based on the COVID data. We will be looking at that data over the winter break and updating the numbers and making a decision at that point about January.
Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And I believe, Madam Vice Chair, you had your hand up next. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate both of your presentations. They were very informative. This kind of goes along with Mr. Ely's comments here. And I'm wondering, I've gotten a lot of questions about the intent form that was recently sent out. And so just for clarification, is that intent form through the first semester only? Or is that for the entire school year?
The, the, the intent right now is to, is based on setting and based on health metrics. So the course assignments that a student has with their teacher will be in that placement until, unless we switch to either another phase where we, where, where we would move from. where we, where, where we would move from my, into an hybrid plan, or that hybrid is expanded to everyday instruction, where kids are, more students can come into our schools, but it's not based on a date. So, the schedules that students will be receiving as we, as, and in particular, the secondary students who will receive their second semester schedules, that placement is determined on health metrics and the opportunity to accommodate more students with either in-person versus virtually. So, so parents can, can be, can, can relax to know that the only thing that will change a student's schedule, other than the semester break, or whether it's time to actually switch to different classes at the secondary level, will be if our COVID metrics change, which will allow us to expand in a safe way, accommodate more students in our schools. Our goal is obviously ultimately to get our students back into school. But, but our health metrics will determine that, not necessarily a date on a schedule, so.
So, if a family has opted for virtual at this point, and then wants to go to hybrid, when it seems like we'll be able to do so, can that family change from having elected virtual and going to hybrid and vice versa?
There, there will be a verification process where parents, when the schedules are assigned for students, the school will communicate directly with that family and the schedule. And at that time, if parents have an interest in, in making a change from virtual to hybrid, again, there is space availability considerations there, because we're, there are going to be specific teachers who will be assigned to work hybrid in person, and there'll be teachers who will work in virtually. So, so they'll, and we can only accommodate based on our six-foot separation. So, it's, so, but there will be an opportunity for parents, if they're expressing to switch from virtual to hybrid, to have an opportunity to do so. They'll have to work that out with their individual school.
With the school, okay. And then for the, for virtual students, is there an A/B schedule? Or is there just a one schedule if the students are virtual? I see Dr. Ming Lamont.
There you go, I saw it pop up.
Yep, I did too.
Good evening, everyone. For the high school, our secondary, there is still an A/B schedule, because that's our schedule. So, regardless of whether you're virtual or you're hybrid, we have to maintain the A/B schedule. Because they're only, you know, they're giving instruction for ninety minutes a day, and you can only have so many classes a day to meet that time period. So, that will remain like we had spoken to before for middle school and for high school, and of course, for elementary, that does not apply.
Okay, so no A/B schedule for elementary and middle. Awesome, awesome, great. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Searls Law, and Ms. Amen, I believe your hand up was next.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Brown. I just have a quick clarification question on that. So, if a family has chosen the hybrid option, and they're looking at getting schedules for second semester, are we looking at assigning to teachers, let's say there's two algebra classes, one teacher might be definitely virtual, one teacher might possibly be in person or not, are we looking at assigning classes in a way that might minimize the need to change teachers? If and when we do go back in, for those who have indicated they would like to go back into the schools when they can?
That's a great question, Mrs. Amen. I think that the, the schedule we put forth, which is the concurrent schedule, is the schedule that prevents or will give the least disruption to a student's schedule, regardless of whether they're elementary or they're high school. So, concurrent meaning that I am, have two algebra teachers, and they're teaching both their hybrid in-person and the virtual students at the same time. So, that's what the concurrent schedule means. So, the only way that we will have disruption to a student's schedule is if we have teachers who are unable to come in for medical reasons, and therefore, the, we're working with our building principals individually, on a case-by-case basis, on how we rearrange and look at those schedules.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions?
Just a point of clarification, Mr. Chairman, on the, on where we're moving with, over the winter break. As we move into the winter break, our, we will meet during, my team will meet during the winter break and look at our COVID health metrics to make sure that we have a best, better assessment based on that data on our current return-to-learn plan, our timeline for transitioning students to in-person instruction. And also, we'll begin to start looking at, as we move back into, coming in from the winter break, where we are with our sports competition schedule. So, health metrics will drive a lot of those decisions. It is our hope that we'll be, we will have some communication with the board, as well as our building leadership and, and staff prior, as we, prior to the winter break, conclusion of the winter break, on where we are with our health metrics and decisions moving forward. We have asked teachers to work, to consider working at home for, for the, at least through the first week after the winter break. While we still have some teachers who are, who come in and want to work out of their classrooms, that is not required at this point, because we would like to minimize the number of individuals in the building at this time. And we'll have further communication regarding teacher requirements as we come back from the winter break. So, just to let the board know, that's the timeline we're working on. We want to make sure that we're making the best decisions possible based on the metrics. Mr. Ely, Mr. Ely and, and Mrs. Rousseau, I'm a glass half-full kind of guy, so I'm hoping that we will all mask up over the holidays and practice safe health, healthy habits, and that we'll see that COVID, those COVID data, that COVID data go in the right direction, and we'll be able to accommodate much of the planning that we have in place. We saw that in July, when the governor instituted quite a bit of his restrictions with, with a lot of the same restrictions that we have in place now. I know we're moving into a holiday situation where people will be out shopping and, and or spending time with families, but we're encouraging everyone to put those measures in place. We, we, we need the data moving in the right direction for us to be able to move Newport News in the right direction. So, thank you for that.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. And with that, I believe, are we on to the next item, item five point oh-two? We have an overview of the 2020, 2021 assessment plan.
And, Mr. Chairman, that will be Dr. Shamika Gerald, who will provide that, that presentation this evening.
Good evening, Board Chair Brown. Can y'all hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay, sorry, that's like the statement of 2020, either unmute or can you hear me? Good evening, Board Chair Brown, Vice Chair Searls Law, Board members, and Dr. Parker. Thank you for the opportunity to share updates for accountability and assessment for the 2020, 2021 school year. The purpose of this evening's presentation is to provide our board and community with an overview of the division's work around assessments and measuring student progress. My goal is to ensure you have a working knowledge of state and federal assessment requirements to provide our community a clear timeline for the NMPS assessment plan development, and to give, to give insight into how NMPS will measure student progress, and finally, provide information on upcoming assessments. During our August eighteenth school board meeting, I provided an update which included information regarding the waiver of state accreditation for the 2020, 2021 school year and the 2021, 2020, 22 school year. This, though accreditation is waived in Virginia, the standards of learning assessments will take place as indicated in the November sixth, 2020 State Superintendent's memo, number two-nine-eight dash two-zero. During our August assessment update, we also reviewed the timeline provided on the screen. On November nineteenth, the Virginia Department of Education provided additional flexibility to school divisions related to the fall 2020 administration of SOLs that take place in January. First, we will discuss locally awarding verified credits. The Virginia Department of Education has expanded the score range for awarding of locally awarded verified credits from three seventy-five to three ninety-nine to a window of three fifty to three ninety-nine for students completing instruction during fall of 2020. Additionally, the assessments must only be attempted once. This is a change from the two attempts that were previously required in order to locally award these credits. School divisions are also provided flexibility to use local performance assessments to award verified credits for end-of-course writing during the 2020, 21, 2021 school year. Use of local performance assessments to verify credits in writing is not a new opportunity, but the emergency guidance provided allows flexibility in where students may complete their writing samples and who can grade them. The number of writing samples permitted to be collected during this school year was increased from one to two. And teachers who have been trained on the application of the Virginia Department of Education rubric will now be permitted to score their own students' writing sample. Finally, school divisions may choose to administer local alternative assessments in lieu of SOLs for Virginia history, civics and economics, and grade eight writing. This guidance, excuse me, serves in an expansion of the use of local alternative assessments, which was previously limited to five content areas, where the SOLs were eliminated by the General Assembly. Those SOLs were grade eight history, grade eight, excuse me, grade three history, grade three science, grade five writing, U.S. history to eighteen sixty-five, and U.S. history eighteen sixty-five to present. You may be wondering why such flexibility with social, with social studies and writing were provided. This is due to the Every Student Succeeds Act not requiring the administration of end-of-course writing and history and social science test. The Virginia Department of Education requires that students earn verified credits in these courses for graduation. Therefore, additional flexibility can be graded, granted on how these students are assessed. I've received a few questions regarding Newport News Public Schools intent related to the emergency guidance provided. Newport News Public Schools plans to administer the standards of learning assessment during the fall 2020 testing window in January. We will meet with members of the Curriculum and Development, Student Advancement, and English Language Learners Department to determine our readiness to implement emergency guidance in spring, 2021 writing in March, and spring 2021 non-writing in May. Several factors influence this decision. With guidance provided on November nineteenth, school divisions that have not opted to participate in local performance and local alternative assessments in lieu of SOLs will be required to develop and submit plans to the state indicating our preparedness to implement these assessments with fidelity. That would mean, that would require additional training, excuse me. That would mean Newport News Public Schools would require teachers to petition, participate, and document additional professional learning around the use of state rubrics for scoring, and collect student samples electronically to meet state reporting requirements. In addition, the impact of this type of change on our students receiving specialized services must be fully explored to ensure we are meeting the needs of each learner and providing services as outlined in each student's individualized education plan. We are committed to considering implementation of emergency flexibility provided during the administrations beyond fall 2020, and look forward to providing you with an update in the near future. You may be wondering, what if a family does not feel comfortable with the requirement to take SOLs face-to-face? The Virginia Department of Education provide flexibility to families to delay testing to the spring 2021 administration in May. Please understand that selecting to delay SOL testing to the spring administration is not a waiver of the requirement. Students must, who must earn verified credits for high school courses and graduation requirements are required to take the associated SOLs. In addition, there has been no flexibility provided by the U.S. Department of Education regarding participation rates and testing requirements under the Every Student Succeeds Act. Federal requirements under Every Student Succeeds Act are not limited to participation in and success on state assessments. Regulations also impact students receiving special education student services through, under IDEA, multi-language learners, and identifi, identification of schools in need of support. I would like to pause for a moment and think about what education looked like on December tenth, two thousand and fifteen, just five years ago. That is the date that the Every Student Succeeds Act was signed. Five years ago, lawmakers had no idea we would be facing a global pandemic that would force schools into virtual learning. The Every Student Succeeds Act's requirement were built on the foundation of education that looked much different than we face today. Federal accountability guidance is the foundation of the accountability systems that guide state and local school divisions. Next slide. As updates are provided, we are committed to keeping Newport News Public Schools on point with flexibility and guidance related to assessments and accountability. Board Chair Brown, I am happy to pause for questions related to the information presented, or would you prefer that I continue and questions are held to the end?
Thank you, Ms. Gerald. We will take an opportunity to take some questions now while it's still fresh. Board members, any questions at this point? Yes, Ms. Amen, please go ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Gerald. Just to make sure I understand, right now, at this point, we're not exercising flexibility to sort of do locally administered, because the thought is that would be too much of a burden on, on the teachers and staff with what they've already got on their plates, and also to, you know, turn things around so quickly. Possible.
Yes, ma'am. Considering what we have already, what we're doing with blended learning at this point, adding an additional training on state rubrics, and we would also be required to train our elementary students and their families on how to enter these, these assessments into a system electronically. And there are state reporting requirements. So, while we don't necessarily have an SOL assessment, there are quarterly reports we are required to put out to the state. So, all of those things considered, it is a very narrow window for us to turn an assessment of system around on a dime.
Thank you, Ms. Amen. Any other questions? Yes, Ms. Best.
I don't know if you might cover it in your future part, but, so you're going to tell us how students will be assessed. Is that a feature?
No, that, if students will be assessed, this presentation is the students will be assessed using the traditional SOL testing method in January. What I will get into in the next couple of slides is what that process looks like for students and how families can secure transportation, or if they choose to delay testing until spring, what that process will look like as well. But they will still take SOLs.
Okay. Will you talk about quarterly assessments as far as elementary?
Yes, ma'am. We will talk about diagnostic assessments, benchmark assessments, and I know that Jordan was very interested in talking about exams. We were, everybody's, those secondary students are waiting on the exam schedule and what that looks like, so I have all that in the second part of the.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Best. Other questions? All right, so we'll go ahead and, and proceed, and proceed forward. Actually, I had one question overall, just in terms of the, the SOLs and the assessments that are being taken in January. How soon will the board be able to see the results of those tests and progress that students are making?
Yes, sir. I did provide a one-pager. I know that we're virtual today. On the back of it, we are prepared to bring updates in March on student growth measures, progress reporting, and any additional Virginia Department of Education updates.
Wonderful, thank you.
You're welcome. Ms. Price, I think we're back. Newport News Public School has worked to develop a balanced assessment system that honors where we are due to the pandemic, measures student learning loss, and identifies priority standards to support the development of student growth measures. Our work is rooted in the Virginia Department of Education's recover, redesign, and restart guidance documents. Guidance regarding assessing the instructional needs of students include a variety of assessments, identify how data will be used, modification of our assessment windows, and how assessment information informs the delivery of equitable supports for all learners. Our assessment plan is also rooted in research and guidance provided by our state leadership and national organizations focused on improving instructional assessments for each learner. In July of 2020, the Return to Learn Assessment Subcommittee was formed. This group conducted an assessment audit and instructional resource inventory to identify the type and frequency of assessments used. In collaboration with Curriculum and Development, we identified diagnostic assessments and set communication regarding the administration of these assessments. Data from these tests used in conjunction with historical SOL performance data and the expertise of our supervisors led to the identification of our priority standards, which will inform the development of student growth measures. Assessment before, for, and of student learning fall into three major categories. As we move from state and federal requirements, we can refocus our lens on most measuring student learning through division created assessments and how data collected can be used to inform the development of instructional plans to support each learner. As I shared previously, Newport News uses a variety of assessments. Specifically in math and English, we administer the diagnostic assessments presented on the screen to determine student strengths, opportunities for growth, knowledge, and skills prior to instruction. A list of assessment types and definitions can be found on page two of your handout in the top right-hand corner. A very, a varied group of assessments results in a varied group of data points that can be used to inform instruction. Being data informed recognizes the results of these assessments as a single input that should be used to inform instructional decisions in context with anecdotal data. Simply put, each student is made up of more than just a test score or multiple test scores. School-based professional learning communities or P L C teams use data to inform their work around each student. School support teams share data with division leaders to set goals and monitor their progress. And as I shared previously, this data can be used to develop our division's priority standards and will be used to develop our student growth measures. In the coming weeks, we will have several assessments that will be administered to students, which will continue to inform our work. Beginning in January, we will administer semester exams and benchmark assessments for the second marking period. We will provide reporting on our results during the March twenty twenty-one board meeting. N M P, N, N P S will also administer additional assessments that require a face-to-face administration. First, Newport News Public Schools will administer Semester One exams and marking period two benchmarks. High school exams, I'm sorry, Ms. Price, can you click? I didn't put it on the thing. Second marking period, uh, high school exams begin Friday, January twenty-second and conclude Wednesday, January twenty-seventh. These assessments will be administered in an online testing environment. We in collaboration with the Departments of Student Achievement, Curriculum and Development, E S L, and Technology, we are working to ensure administering these assessments will meet the needs of along all learners. In addition, a virtual assessment administration and monitoring best practices document is in development to support instructional teams during this transition. The assessments listed here must be given in a face-to-face environment. Newport News is committed to keeping the health and safety of our school community our primary focus. In partnership with Division Health Services, Transportation, and Building Leadership, we will continue to meet the Virginia Department of Health, C D C, and Newport News Public Schools guidelines regarding health and safety. The P S A T N M S Q T is a national exam that is used to determine the eligibility and qualifications for the National Merit Scholarship Program and serves as a practice test for the S A T. Understanding that all students should have access to opportunities such as qualifying for this, for the National Merit Scholarship, Newport News Public Schools has committed financial support for any current eleventh-grade student who wishes to participate in this exam. Due to the nature of this examination, College Board is unable to provide an alternative date for this assessment. And Newport News Public Schools is offering the P S A T N M S Q T on an opt-in basis. Parents of current eleventh-grade students will see, will receive a registration link via ParentView. This link will allow them to opt into the assessment and indicate if they need transportation or not. Yes, this falls on the exam days for second and fourth block. Opting in to the P S A T will not excuse or exempt students for their semester exams, and students must make these exams up in accordance with school board policy I K dash P, Evaluation of Instruction. In partnership with school leadership and our professional school counselors, each school will identify a P S A T exam makeup day for their building. This will eliminate the need for students and teachers to coordinate exams and makeups individually. Our multi-language learners are required under federal ever, Every Student Succeeds Act guidelines to participate in the four-part W I D A Access for Ls assessment. Information regarding these testing dates is built around our phased return to in-person instruction. For students who remain in the virtual environment, these assessment, the assessment administration will be coordinated through our Department of E S L, school testing coordinators, and of course, our transportation department. Last but not least, our Fall twenty twenty Administration for S O L Assessments will take place beginning January fifteenth. As I shared previously, little flexibility has been provided regarding the administration of these assessments and federal participation rates will still be calculated. Email communication will be sent to families who are scheduled to participate in S O L tech testing. Each email will include a registration link and student-specific passwords. Families will be prompted to register for a testing date or select the option to delay testing until spring of twenty twenty-one. The registration process is critical and serves as our required documentation for participation in assessments as measured by the Department of Education. During the registration process, families will be able to indicate if transportation is needed, and they will also be able to indicate what date they would like to take the assessment. I would like to take a moment to thank Matt Thomas, Web Applications Developer, for his work in making online registration possible for our school community. As we begin to look ahead towards our next steps with assessments, we will continue to work with our divisions instructional teams to implement flexibility and be prepared to provide updates to the board in March. Thank you for your time, and I am happy to accept questions and receive your feedback at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Gerald. Additional questions from the board? Oh, yes, Mr. Moody.
Hi, Dr. Gerald. Thank you so much for this presentation. I just had a quick question for you, and that was as far as the assessments are for students. Uh, how will that information be, uh, brought out and explained to all of the students?
Um, well, eh, I know that Mr. Wright is on here from School Leadership. We are, I know that Dr. Barnett is working on the publication of the exam memo that goes out to building principals, and that is generally how that information is communicated. In addition, the exam dates were published on the approved school board calendar. So no changes to the board calendar have been made as of yet. So exams are on the calendar. And I know that we've been in virtual, but we're gonna continue with the exam schedule at this time because we can administer in a virtual environment and in a online environment.
Thank you, Dr. Gerald.
You're welcome.
Mr. Moody, additional questions? All right. Well, I'll just make one other, uh, question and a comment, which is, uh, fantastic to see the P S A T offered. I know that it was something that is, uh, very near and dear to my heart. Uh, and the, uh, the, the question is, is I guess two-part. One, um, and apologize if you covered this already, Advanced Placement Exams. I know this is an unusual year, uh, but you know, how are, are we still doing as far as the A P testing, uh, being offered and, uh, for our students? And then secondarily, in terms of the P S A T, I believe that's a, um, it, it's not new that we're offering it, but it may be new that we're, we're offering it for free. Uh, and robo calls, uh, announcements, things on the website, what kinds of things are we planning to do just to, along Mr. Moody's point, to publicize to parents? Uh, because it's gonna take, it's gonna take a lot of support from parents in the community to get the kids to the school on that day. Uh, uh, normally, they would already be in school and we could pull them out for something like this, but it's gonna take a lot of community support. So, uh, things that have been planned to get the community's attention about the P S A T and then A P testing.
Yes, sir. I'll, um, address the A P testing first. So I, we took this, um, assessment plan in chunks. So right now, we're just talking about what's happening in the January testing window. And so the A P testing happens in May with the spring S O L testing. So as we get more information and in the March meeting, I hope to provide additional updates. We'll talk about what that plan looks like moving forward. In addition, we've been in close communication with College Board. So we'll be sure to keep up, keep the board and the community updated on any information coming out um, from College Board with regard to A P testing and, uh, I'm working with Dr. Becker-Dite with our, um, tag program and gifted services. So it's definitely, um, able to provide those updates as we get closer to some of those dates and information is released. Are you good with Dr. Parker?
Yeah, and you may recall last ye- last of May, the, uh, College Board made some adjustments to the A P testing schedule to allow students to take A P testing virtually. So I'm assuming that there will still be some level of accommodation in, in our teachers, uh, A P teachers should still be preparing the students for an A P exam because that's, uh, one of the purposes of taking that A P course is to take that rigorous exam and receive credit for the course, uh, college credit towards the course.
Yes, sir.
Yes, Ms. Amen.
Thank you, and thank you, Dr. Gerald. Quick question on the, uh, P S A Ts, or I guess really any standardized test. Um, you know that every student has a device at home, will there be additional options or opportunities if they wanted to, um, practice or get familiar with the type of format, uh, that they might be able to use their device to kind of prepare for these types of tests?
Are you talking about specifically P S A T assessments? Or are you talking about our division-created assessments?
Um, I guess P S A T, I think, P S A T and S A Ts, you know, sometimes those, just the familiarity can be a big benefit.
Well, the, the P S A T and S A T both have online testing options for students. So you can go online and take a practice S A T or P S A T test. And those environments are very similar to what they would experience, um, in a testing environment. The thing with the P S A T is, and, um, thank you to Dr. Hines for giving me a crash course in P S A T testing and carry you not to. P S A T tests are administered in paper only. So you can practice online, but the P S A T is administered paper only. And not only does Newport News Public Schools pay for the eleventh-grade students to take the P S A T, they are, um, our school division also pays for all 10th graders to take the P S A T. Our P S A T that we're gonna schedule for 10th grade will be on March twenty-sixth. There is an option with that, that the National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test is the only one we had no flexibility on. So P S A ten will be offered on March the twenty-sixth as well. So did that answer both of your questions? I know that you had a second part to your question, Mr. Brown.
Oh, that's, that does. Thank you.
And we do have the School Counseling Department. The survey will go live in ParentView, I believe, this evening. Um, we have information that will be pushed out via Canvas, and we definitely will take into consideration uh, other avenues of publicizing this information to our families. So we get as much, um, participation as possible. And transportation, um, Mrs. Russell, I know is on the call, has been very flexible um, and, and, and is really willing to work with our schools, um, our school community to provide transportation for those families who need it.
Thank you. Other questions from the board? All right. Thank you, Dr. Joe.
You're welcome.
And I believe that, um, Dr. Parker, does that conclude our assessment plan report? And moves us on to, uh, item five point oh-three, five point oh-three, a report on our proposed policy revisions and the review of fiscal management policies.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Dr. Gerald, for that detailed report, and we look forward to, uh, an update in March, uh, on our students' progress. Um, uh, on our, on our assessments, our program, our assessment opportunities. Mr. Chairman, we, uh, I'm very pleased this evening to, uh, to report to the board that, uh, based on your July retreat, there was an interest on, uh, the board having a cyclical process for updating, uh, our policies uh, to ensure that, uh, in addition to our Virginia School Board, uh, recommended updates and state, uh, and recommendations by, um, from state code, that we're looking at our po- policies on a, on a rotating basis to ensure that our policies at Newport News are updated regularly. So tonight, um, um, Mrs. Brooks is bringing the first, um, I think she calls them packets or booklets of policies that, uh, uh, and, and these are business service policies, uh, to the board for consideration, uh, and update. And she has a, uh, fairly, uh, short, uh, update on which policies need to be, uh, need to be modified. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Brooks now for that, uh, inform, in, informative, uh, update.
Great. Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Parker. Good evening, Chairman Brown, Vice Chairman Searls, all members of the board, and Dr. Parker. It is a pleasure to share highlights from ten new and revised policies and procedures with you this evening, which will also include, as Dr. Parker mentioned, the first of our policy chapters for review this year. As you know, one of the major roles of the School Board is to set the policy direction of the School Division. So we're fortunate to have two board members on the Policy Committee, Dr. Best and Mrs. Aitman, along with the principal from each level, administrators from the Department of Teaching and Learning and the Office of School Leadership, a teacher, our two attorneys, and myself as the policy administrator. Now, during our policy review process, the department leads or senior staff members present their new and revised policies and procedures to the committee. After our discussion and review, we hold a public comment period and may incorporate the input received into the policy drafts that are before you this evening, which is step eight of the policy review process. Now, this evening, I'd like to share revisions to two policies that support best practices in the School Division, particularly as we begin the first year of implementing our new strategic plan. And following those policies, as Dr. Parker mentioned, I will highlight changes made to some of the policies and procedures in our chapter on Fiscal Management, which is the first of three chapters the Policy Committee will review this school year and bring before the School Board. Under supporting best practices, I will review changes proposed to our current policy on educational philosophy, School Division Mission Statement, and then our policy on the collection of money, which addresses student meal charges. Our policy on educational philosophy is being revised to add the mission and vision statements that were developed during the School Division's strategic planning process this past spring as a part of Journey twenty twenty-five, which was approved by the School Board in June. Our mission and vision statements focus on the School Division's commitment to ensuring that our students graduate college, career, and citizen-ready. Next is our policy on the collection of money. As you are aware, Newport News is currently designated as a Community Eligibility Provision or C E P School Division, which allows us to provide meals for all students at no charge. As a result, federal and state guidelines no longer require the School Division to have a policy that addresses collecting money for reduced and full-priced meals. So we are proposing to delete this policy. And now on to our policy chapter review. You may recall at your July one organizational meeting when I shared our plan for implementing the simple systematic review of our eleven policy chapters over a five-year period while continuing to develop or update the policies that may be required by law each year. At that time, I mentioned that our policy manual includes over four hundred policies, many of which have implemented procedures and exhibits. So as we review each chapter, we will consider whether to delete or revise the policy if outdated due to changes in School Division needs, resources, or technological innovations. In some cases, we may combine one policy with another if they're complementary. We may modify the policy to align it with legislative changes or V S B A recommendations. We may maintain the policy if it is current and reflects best practices or develop a new policy to support emerging School Division needs or strategic plan direction or new opportunities that may evolve. So the Policy Committee used that process to review the first policy chapter in our timeline, which is Fiscal Management, led by Business Office Staff in the areas of accounting, budget, payroll, and purchasing. I'd like to thank Mrs. Ross, so in the Business Office Team for sharing their expertise and a phenomenal level of detail that enabled us to complete this work. So the committee reviewed approximately sixty documents, including forty policies and nearly twenty procedures and exhibits in the Fiscal Management Chapter. We made revisions to over twenty-five policies, procedures, and exhibits combined. After we reviewed the sixty documents, many of the revisions reflected updates to in-house operating procedures primarily due to technology and innovation, while other changes involved uh, changes in position titles and dates. So we provided two zip folders for you, one that includes documents that required changes and the other for those documents that did not. So at this time, I would like to highlight just a few of the policies and procedures that were revised. So at this time, I would like to highlight just a few of the policies and procedures that were revised. The Signing Authority Policy focuses on the school board's authority to designate the persons who may sign state and federal documents at its annual July organizational meeting. We removed the reference to the appointment of agents and deputy agents being authorized to make payments and placed it more appropriately in the Policy on Payment Authorization. Next is the procedure for non-resident students wishing to attend the school division as tuition students, which was updated to reflect the current process in place, which begins with obtaining the tuition approval application from the Business Office. Once completed, the application is sent to the Executive Director of the appropriate department, such as Elementary, Secondary, or Special Education, for their review. If approved by the Executive Director, the form is returned to the Business Office to send an approval letter and payment information to the parent. Should the application be denied, the Business Office will provide a written explanation. The Payroll Payment Options Procedure was updated to add the current option of depositing an employee's net pay on a pay card. We also added language on computing prorated pay for hourly employees. Next is the Salary Deductions Policy and Procedure, which outlined the deductions that may be made from an employee's salary. We added the contribution or salary deduction for members of the Newport News Employees Retirement Fund, which includes current full-time employees not covered on the Virginia Retirement System, and these employees are generally child nutrition services, custodial, plant services, and transportation staff. We also added a health savings account as a voluntary deduction, which allows employees to set aside money on a pre-tax basis to pay for qualified medical expenses. In the Tax Shelter Annuities Policy, we deleted the requirement for a school board member to serve on the Investment Committee, which is authorized to approve investment options for employee tax sheltered annuities, such as 403B plans and 457B plans. And in revising the procedure on expense authorization reimbursement for travel, we standardized tips at $5 per day for allowable services such as baggage handling, housekeeping, and required valet parking. The reimbursement for travel itemized form was updated and will accompany the procedure as an exhibit. Our last policy this evening is on retirement programs. So in addition to the school board's contribution to our two pension plans, the Retirement Programs Policy was revised to acknowledge eligible employees' contribution to the city pension plan and to the Virginia Retirement System Plan, which covers nurses, instructional assistants, and administrative, teaching, and clerical support employees. So in terms of our next steps, the new and revised policies will come before you for action at your July, I'm sorry, your January 19th meeting. And once approved, the new and revised policies, procedures, and exhibits will be posted on our school division websites and disseminated to schools and public libraries. So this concludes my report, but joining me this evening to respond to questions is our award-winning account accounting supervisor and resident expert, Mr. Steve Canal, who will be retiring in a couple of days after 36 years of service. So it was important for us to review this chapter first before he leaves the school division. Thank you.
Well, thank you for that report, and uh, thank you, Mr. Canal, especially if we don't, uh, mention it often enough. Thank you so very much for your years of service and your knowledge and dedication. Uh, someone who's been here for, uh, as long as I can remember, and that spreadsheet that you have. You know, Ms. Brooks, that'll be my question, uh, do you know how to operate the spreadsheet?
No, but Steve's, those who follow Steve will.
All right, well, board members, other questions? Well, thank you for that thorough presentation, and uh, this very important work. I know that the uh, policy work is so very important. I know it doesn't necessarily get all of the the public attention, but uh, when the public calls, school board members, that is what I turn to, is our policies to answer questions from the public and to answer questions from teachers and administrators when they ask me questions. So thank you so much for that, um, that report, and we will look forward to taking action on that in January. I believe now, uh, we're on to item 5.04, uh, the attendance report, 5.05, the membership report, 5.06, the construction report, or members, you have copies of those in your packets. Uh, are there any questions about those, uh, report items? All right, uh, hearing none, then we will move on to, uh, item 5.07, comments by the Superintendent, Dr. Parker.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I too would like to reiterate, uh, uh, to Mr. Steve Canal, uh, thank you, job well done for your service to Newport News Public Schools. Uh, you will truly be missed, uh, in our ranks, and uh, you never, you never say, uh, that you'll replace someone. Uh, some folks are just invaluable, so invaluable to the organization that they will never be replaced. Uh, we can, but we will, uh, we definitely will keep the ship moving forward. So thank you, Steve, for your service. Uh, I'll, I will begin, Mr. Chairman, by congratulating. We have a student, uh, Mr. Miles Thomas, a sophomore at Heritage High School, who is named, who was named the Region Two winner in the 2020 Computer Science In Your Neighborhood Competition, sponsored by Code VA and the Virginia Department of Education. In response to a writing prompt asking what he would create using computer science, uh, Miles wrote an essay describing three applications he would design. Two that would assist incarcerated individuals in finding jobs upon their release, and one that would help families communicate and stay connected with those who, uh, were, who are incarcerated. As the regional winner, Miles earned a new laptop. I'd like to thank, uh, congratulate that young man for his innovation, his innovative thoughts, and I reckon that representing Newport News Public Schools in such a positive way. Congratulations, Miles. Last Wednesday, December 9th, we held our annual Legislative Roundtable. Uh, Mr. Pat Finneran, our Director of Government Relations, uh, reviewed our legislative priorities, uh, which led to a great discussion with our state senators and delegates. We'd like to especially thank, uh, Senator Monty Mason, Delegate Marcia Price, and Delegate Shelley Simons for joining us and, uh, sharing their insights into the upcoming legislative sessions. And special thanks to the Legislative aides, Senator Mamie, for our limit, Senator Mamie Locke, and Delegate Mike Mullen, who joined us as well. Uh, thank you for, uh, for your ongoing support and partnership with Newport News Public Schools. Tomorrow, we are hosting three virtual town halls about our return to learn planning, continuing to have dialogue with our community regarding, uh, um, matters that that matter the most to our community and constituents. Uh, students and parents are invited to join our leadership team to learn more about our return to learn in-person, um, planning. Uh, the elementary, uh, student town hall will be held from 1:00 to 2:00 P.M. So, uh, parents of elementary students, uh, that we have a town hall specifically for our students, uh, please feel free to join us tomorrow. A town hall for middle and high school students will be held from 2:30 to 3:30. And the parent town hall will be held at 6:30 P.M. Please visit our website to register, and we look forward to, to speaking with you tomorrow at one of those town halls. As a reminder, all schools and offices will be closed from December 21st through January 1st for the winter break. I wish everyone a happy and safe holiday. Enjoy your time off, uh, enjoy your families, and I'll look forward to seeing everyone rested and ready in January. So that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman, and thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. So we'll now move on to item six, which is another opportunity for us to hear from the public. Madam Clerk, are there any cards? Are there any cards? Uh, there being no cards, then we will move on to matters by the school board. Uh, Mr. Moody, uh, please take it away.
Alrighty, well, good evening to everyone. I would like to first, um...
That might have had something to do with it. Can you hear me now? All right, good evening, everyone. I would like to echo a few things that Dr. Parker has said, and first, student family, that is, the winter break is coming up. And so I want to remind you, and I want to really encourage you, um, that it is better to keep up than to catch up. So please make sure that you catch up with, or if you have to catch up, that you catch up with all of your work before Friday the 18th, okay? And I would too like to say or remind you that virtual attendance is important. It is important that you continue to attend classes even virtually. Attendance is still being taken and learning is still taking place. Well, it is, it is funny that Mr. Miles Thomas, uh, was awarded the 2020 Computer Science In Your Neighborhood Award, and I want to celebrate that hurricane once again. And I would like to say, um, that Newport Door, we as a whole, um, celebrated Computer Science Week last week. And so we did have some computer science talks, webinar, that I was blessed to host, and I would like to thank Mr. Nick Swan again for that opportunity. I am happy to announce that The Vibe Student Talk Show will be posting a The Vibe Holiday Edition on Friday, December 18th at 7:00 A.M. So right before you get to go to school, you can see our holiday edition, and we will send you out in style. It is a privilege and honor to serve as a guest speaker along with the President of Centerra Hospital, other Centerra leaders, and Hampton University graduate speakers at the Dream of the Community Linking Health Equity from Generations to Generations on January 18th at 6:00 P.M. I will be sure to share that information as soon as the details are finalized. Lastly, I am excited to host the Return to Learn Student Virtual Town Hall. My student family, this is your opportunity to ask the leaders of NMPS, uh, your questions regarding returning to in-person instruction. I just want to thank Dr. Parker and his senior staff in advance for doing this, that we, the students, are being able to be heard in this time. Uh, elementary students, as Dr. Parker mentioned, your, your webinar is from 1:00, 2:00, and secondary students, yours is from 2:30 to 3:30. And for more information and for the Zoom link, you can go on the NMPS website. And lastly, as always, I invite you to connect with me on Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter, at Student Rep NMPS. That concludes my remarks, Mr. Chairman.
All right, wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Moody, and now we'll move to Ms. Aiman.
All right, thank you, Chairman Brown. Is that, is this working? Okay, all right. I've had some technical difficulties, so. Thank you, Mr. Moody, and I just want to echo what Mr. Moody said, encourage everyone to finish this week out strong. We've got just a little bit of the week left, and it would be, um, great to finish classes out strong and, uh, any catch-up work so that you can jump into the winter break with, um, uh, stress-free, which would be great. And I just wanted to encourage everyone to stay safe and enjoy the holidays with your family. And know that, um, you, Dr. Parker, and we'll certainly be meeting, um, before, before New Year's, or at least, um, getting some information about how things are going and, uh, looking forward to, you know, planning and seeing what, what January holds. So certainly, um, hoping to see the glass half-full. We'll see how, how, how things go. But everyone just enjoy the holidays and a nice break, and I look forward to seeing everyone come January.
Wonderful. Thank you, Ms. Aiman. Mr. Ely.
I would like to just thank, um, everyone for all the amazing presentations they had today. And just want to encourage everybody to continue to stay safe, and want to like to wish everybody a happy holidays, and that's it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ely.
Thank you.
Mr. Hunter.
Oh, well, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. Uh, very good, uh, great things are happening in Newport News Public Schools. I just want to mention one special thing, uh, Representative Bobby Scott had a congressional app challenge. Just wanted to like to mention to the student who won from first-place student who won out of Demby High School, uh, yesterday, I think it's our Heritage, can't recall, I can't recall his name. But I just do want to give a shout-out to, uh, Newport News for winning that app challenge. And, um, again, I just want to wish everyone a, a happy holiday, a happy Hanukkah, a Merry Christmas, a wonderful rest of the year, and a prosperous new year.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hunter for that, and thank you for noting, yeah, Demby High School representing in that, that app challenge. Uh, Mr. Harris.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, first, I'd like to say I would definitely like to meet Mr. Miles Thomas from Heritage High School. I thought I was actually, uh, uh, what do you call it, texting one person on the, uh, system. I think I texted to everybody, so that's another reason I probably need to meet him. Probably, probably could learn some, uh, techniques, tactics, and procedures from him. But I think it's a wonderful program. I've dabbled in it before, and, uh, you know, it takes a special type of person to, uh, you know, to even, to even think that way at a young age. So I think he has, has a lot going for him. Also, I would like to, uh, uh, just recognize a lot of the military families out there during the holidays, which is one of the most trying times for anyone in uniform. A lot of people don't realize that, that there are more individuals deployed during this, during the holiday seasons than any time of the year. Uh, just because, uh, the rest of the world, you know, knows that this is a time when America normally drops its guard and goes into relaxed state of mind. But at the same time, while we're here sleeping, uh, there's someone that is, uh, that is always on watch. Uh, so, you know, just want to, uh, uh, you know, let people know that, you know, there are probably young couples and young families, that even though they may be here back on base, but majority of families somewhere completely different. All right, and they normally don't have the opportunity to get back to their home state, you know, to spend holidays with them. So I just want to make sure, uh, that I did a shout-out for them. And, uh, and everyone else, you know, wish you a wonderful holidays over the season, and, uh, that's it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Harris. Dr. Best.
Um, good evening, everyone. I'll be very brief. I would too like to congratulate and thank, uh, Mr. Steve Canal for 36 years to Newport News Public Schools. I'd like to congratulate, uh, Mr. Miles Thomas for his, uh, app that he proposed for the contest. I would just like to acknowledge that he was thinking about other people and not himself. And, and that's just, it, it, it's always, I just have hope and, and belief, and, and that just restores my hope and, and, and make me, uh, feel so positive about the future, our future of, of the country, of the world, because of young people like Miles. Again, I would like to say congratulations to him and very proud of him. And for everyone out there, uh, please take a minute to get some rest, eat some good food, love your family, and be loved. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Best. White Man of Vice Chair, Searls Law.
Hey, I want to piggyback on Steve Canal. I just can't imagine what it's like for you one day being with us for 36 years, and then the next day, you know, you have retired. We will miss you. Uh, take care of yourself and know you have done a job well done. Um, I, we attended the Virginia School Board Association, uh, State, um, Programming Conference, uh, this, since the last time we met, we even had presentations from Dr. Mitchell and her team at that event, and it was great to see the representation of our district at that event. Um, thank you to our teachers for guiding and sacrificing during this time. Students, you have done a marvelous job. Hang in there and finish strong. Enjoy your break, but stay safe. Stay safe. And, Dr. Parker, thank you for your leadership and guidance through this time. We hats off to you as well as your leadership team. So happy holidays to everyone.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, and I'm going to say thank you to our, uh, board clerk. Uh, thank you so much for providing, uh, so a small, uh, Christmas gift for members of the board. And I know that, uh, I miss you all, that you all, we couldn't be together, uh, tonight, but, um, you'll get your, you'll, you'll get your gift at a future time. Uh, just know that, uh, uh, we, the vision, you know, we're thinking of you, and, and thank you for a great year uh, and all the things that you all have done. And I also want to, uh, echo those comments about, uh, Dr. Parker. Thank you for your leadership uh, during, uh, this most difficult, uh, and challenging time. It is great to have, uh, such consistency uh, and empathetic leadership that, uh, that you've, uh, been able to show to uh, all of our staff and, and letting them know that we, we care about them. So uh, I'm going to devote my closing comments to an article that appeared in the Daily Press, uh, regarding our installation of our solar panels. I wanted to address that uh, because there was, uh, some consternation, uh, about, uh, the way that, uh, the board, uh, has conducted itself. Um, in two, in November 2019, uh, the school board voted unanimously to authorize and direct the superintendent to execute site leases to implement various solar energy projects within the school division, including the installation of solar panels. Uh, the school board voted on this item. The school board voted on this item because it, for the same reason that we do everything else, it was in the best interest of children. It is in the best interest of children. It ensures fiscal responsibility and the other side benefit promotes green energy, but most importantly, it's in the best interest of children. The school board will save over four million dollars over the next thirty years at no cost to the taxpayers of this city. This translates to more operating dollars, more funding for initiatives that improve student outcomes. And so the board took, made this decision, which is our right to do. And the board entered into a contract with a vendor, which is also our right to do under the Virginia Constitution. Every board member took an oath to put the needs of our children first. Our oath was not to second guess what the needs are to play any kind of games or negotiations with the needs, but to, to find those needs and find a prescription for fulfilling those needs. Our local system was designed for the school board to determine the needs of our children and declare those needs publicly, which is what we've done. We have submitted a set of conditional use permits for Lee Hall Elementary, Gatewood Peep, Heritage High, Heinz Middle, Saunders Elementary, Discovery STEM Academy, Yates Elementary, the Transportation Building, Gilder Sleeve Middle, and our administration building. The school board is an independent and separate governing body, as declared under the Constitution of Virginia. We have a fiduciary responsibility to make independent decisions. Independent, for anyone to imply or infer otherwise is unreasonable and irresponsible and undermines the powers that are granted to us by the Constitution, which were set up in this manner on purpose. The board is responsible for making requests, as we have done in this case, and we are charged to accept the outcome for or against our request. The board has, has done that in this case. The school board stands ready to hear council's declaration on our permits, and we respect the vote that they take and we will accept the vote that they take. The facts of our case have been laid bare for everyone to examine. Our permits will receive a fair hearing, we're sure of, in accordance with the process established by the city. The city will declare the outcome of our permits and then we'll move forward, as we've always done. And so we thank you tonight for your attention and for tuning in. Twenty twenty was a challenging year for sure. It'll be good to see you all on the other side of twenty twenty. We wish you all a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays, and we will see you again in twenty twenty-one. Good night. Good night, everyone.